Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Joint Hawaiian Affairs and Housing Committee hearing. I'm Senator Maile Shumabukuru, Chair of the Hawaiian Affairs Committee. Other members of my committee are Vice Chair Senator Kurt Favella, Member Lesihara, Member Jared Keho'Kolole, and Member Tim Richards. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. You can find links to viewing options for all Senate hearings and meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. If you're interested in seeing written testimony, go to Legislature's website, capital.hawaii.gov. In the unlikely event that we must abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business and a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. For people testifying remotely, all testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until it's your turn to testify. As the committees practice, there is a two-minute time limit per testifier. If there are temporary technical glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the committee has already received your written testimony. Members, please wait to ask questions for testifiers until we have gone through all the testifiers for that measure. And so, did you want to introduce the Housing Committee?
Yes, thank you, Chair. For the Housing Committee, we have myself as Chair. We also have Vice Chair Puke Neva and Member Carl Brice.
Okay.
And Brendan.
Very good. Okay, so we're going to start with SB 448. This exempts housing development for the Department of Hawaii's Homelands from G E T tax, school impact fee requirements, and also extends the county affordable housing credits to D H H L. So first up, we have D H H L in support. Thank you very much, Chair. Second, we have Attorney General with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair Senators. I'm Josh Michael, Deputy Attorney General. You have our comments to highlight potential appropriations to do as well as some of the session law. I just haven't answered any questions.
Thank you very much for being here. We have the School Facilities Authority with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. I stand on my testimony.
Thank you so much.
I'll be over there.
Okay. Department of Taxation with comments.
Good afternoon, Gary Sulu, Department of Taxation. You stand on your testimony.
Thank you very much. Okay. Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments. Okay. Hawaii County Council, District Three, Susan Lee Loyd. And they have comments. Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Senate for Hawaiian Sovereignty Studies with opposition. We have the Office of the Governor, Chief Housing Officer, Nani Maderos, with comments. We have Dowling Company Incorporated in support. Anyone else here for SB 448? Seeing none. Members, any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Do you agree?
I think that was the School Facilities Authority. Yes.
You can just explain your comments to the community again.
Yeah, absolutely. So our comments here just represent that we recognize that there is monies that will be required. Should that not be collected on the front end, that we recognize that we don't want a whole bunch of community moving into one area and not provide that monies with the necessary infrastructure, especially schools.
Okay. Attorney General.
Senator.
Yeah. Can you just explain your comments?
Sure. We don't have any substantive problem with the bill. Just the appropriations needs a definite date. According to the Constitution, all appropriations have to lapse within three years. And then we just wanted to make sure some of the changes being made to pass session laws. It appears that it was not accounting for changes that took place in between that version and the current language. So just making sure everything that was amended matches up correctly.
Technical nature.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Senator.
If we're going to hold on a moment. By having, I guess, I know we talked about this, about exemptions and the only reason why I bring this up is because upcoming future development in M O B G is going to impact our schools and our infrastructure. So I like the whole content of the bill. He's just very concerned of what my community had stressed at the meeting that you came to the library. So we're having that, Chair, the exemptions and stuff. How is that going to help you guys moving forward within the Department of Hawaii Homeland?
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair. So we've provided data in the form of tables as to how the estimated savings would save us dollars. We'd like to take the savings on the dollars and utilize those to put them into more lot development. That's what we're looking at.
Thank you. I just wanted to say this, so that it's on the record if I support the bill. You know what I mean?
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Okay. Seeing none, then let's move on to the last bill, which is SB 1353. This exempts any development of homestead lots or housing for the Department of Hawaii's Homelands from the G E T use taxes. And so for this, first we have D H H L in support.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Department of Taxation with comments.
Yes, Chair. Essentially the same comments as in prior.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Budget and Finance with comments. We have Hawaii County Council support. And then we have, okay. Oh, yeah, and then Nani Maderos, Chief Housing Officer, in support. Is anyone else here for SB 1353? Seeing none, members, any questions? Yes, Senator Rhodes.
I have a question for DOTAC, if you don't mind. I would destroy the microphone. It's always a question for me on the general tax exemption, general excise tax exemptions. The person who receives, who doesn't have to pay the tax, they're not required to pass anything on. They don't have to pass the savings on to anybody, do they?
That's correct. The taxes in, the tax, in a lot of cases, imposed on the merchant or seller on their gross receipts, there's no requirement. Sometimes they pass it on to the consumers, sometimes they don't. So same thing within exemption, they wouldn't have to pass the savings on.
But for these two bills, there's no, that's still the case with these two bills. You don't, they don't have to pass it on.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chairs.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, then I'm going to, do you folks need to recess for decision-making? Or are you okay with me going right into decision-making? Okay, okay. All right. So I'm going to go into decision-making. And for the first measure, SB 448 was exempted housing developments for D H H L from G E Ts, school impact fees, and extending the affordable housing tax credits. I get a recommendation passed with amendments. We have several technical amendments that the Attorney General recommended. We also have D H H L's testimony, which contains various technical type amendments as well that I'd like to adopt. And we also have DOTAC that recommends effective date of January 1, 2024. So mostly all technical amendments in nature. Any concerns or questions? Seeing none, passing of amendments, Vice Chair Favella.
Chair Shubhakur votes aye. Vice Chair Reservations, Senator Ihara.
Reservations.
Senator Keho'Kolole.
Aye.
All right. And Richard says, oh.
Aye.
Right on. Senator Richard, sorry. Didn't see you over there.
Aye.
All right. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, and so for the Committee on Housing, same recommendation to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
For the Committee on Housing, Chair's recommendation on SB 448 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Kino.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Reservations. Senator Awon.
Aye.
Aye. Chair, five ayes. Your recommendations adopted. Thank you.
Okay, and then for the last bill, SB 1353. This is the D H H L exempting housing from the G E T tax. I'd like to recommend we pass with amendments. And Budget and Finance recommended that in promulgating the rules, D H H L works jointly with DOTAC. So that's okay. So that, just that amendment. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, then Vice Chair.
Okay, with all five members present, we have any names or reservations? Reservations for me? Anyone else? Okay, motion passes. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the Committee on Housing, same recommendation to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 1353, Committee on Housing. Chair's recommendations pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Kino.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Reservations. Senator Awon.
Aye.
Five ayes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you so much. We're adjourned for our joint. Okay, gabbling into the Hawaiian Affairs Agenda, 101 Agenda. I'm just going to go straight into the things that's already read in my announcements earlier. So the first bill is SB 1235. And this is clarified that the working group established by Act 226 is a temporary public land trust working group within Office of Governor for administrative purposes only. And this is for OHA. Providing the working group's sole purpose shall be to compile a definitive inventory of public trust lands, amends composition of working group, and authorizes working group to hire staff and appropriate funds. Okay, so first up, we have Office of Hawaiian Affairs with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. Members of the committee, Sylvia Hesse, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Chief Executive Officer. The, I first wanted to acknowledge our Trustees Board Chair Kulunzi, BAE Committee Chair, Trustee Akaka, as well as Trustee Suzha here in support. Our comments, we stand on our comments regarding the measure and then request respectfully that the committee defer this because Act 226 very clearly outlines the parameters of the work group. And we've been operationalizing it already by naming work group members as well as planning and getting started. So that's, and we are obviously here to answer any questions for the committee.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Next, we have Budget and Finance with comments.
Neil Baeira for the Department of Budget and Finance. We strongly recommend that there were three original purposes set out or roles for the Working Committee under Act 226. This bill focuses on just the land inventory. We recommend that the other two roles be put back in.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next, we have Senator Leo Malama-Solomon, members that are in support.
Yeah, aloha, Mai.
Aloha.
Aloha. So you have my testimony in front of you. And if there's any questions, I'll be very happy to answer. I am strongly supportive of this bill. I do not think that the Work Advisory Group should be the ones negotiating the settlement with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. I think that's a separate issue. But I'm going to defer it to the committee discretion, you know, as well as to OHA. But I think that this bill is well-needed, especially today. We're addressing the affordable housing crisis in the state of Hawaii. And if we can possibly look at the utilizations of our public trust lands to serve that purpose, you know, then it's mandatory that we have a conclusive inventory so that we can move forward. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here for SB 1235? Seeing none, members, any questions? I guess I have questions for OHA. I know that one of the amendments you recommend or one of the things you point out that you don't like about the bill is that it talks about doing a inventory of all public land trusts and not limiting to ceded lands. So, Callum, I. Yes.
One of the things that we appreciate about the forepart is to say that the public land trust is the subset of the total ceded land. So we absolutely agree that the study should include the establishment of the 100% and then have the subset and look at the public land trust piece, and then look at the value. So the incremental aspects are what we support. And by taking out the language of ceded, it really just focuses it on one thing when we really should look at the 100% of what is there, then look at the subset of the public land trust, the value, and then look at further. So that's all we're saying, that the current work group construct doesn't preclude any of that from doing. So the specificity that's here really isn't needed because the land group is set up, the components, the objectives, and we can still accomplish those incremental pieces in the current construct of Act 226.
Okay. But if this bill, I mean, if this is just going to be kept alive at least for discussion purposes, you would prefer that the word ceded be put back in.
Correct. Because that describes the totality of the obligation, and the public land trust is the subset. Both are important.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, members? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Next up, we have SCR 14 and SR 12. And this requesting OHA to establish and maintain Hawaiian culture centers within the state. And so first up, we have the Ko'olau Foundation in support. Anyone, seeing none? Anyone else here for SCR 14, SR 12? Seeing none, I guess there's no one to ask questions of, so we'll go on. SB 1356, Remain to Adoption. Allows an adopted individual to both, to benefit both by relationship through a natural parent and through an adopted parent, disposition or other designation as provided for in accordance with the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. Allows the adopted individual and individual's natural family continue having the same familial relationship. First up, we have D H H L in support.
Stand on our remarks, Chair.
Thank you so much. O'Monopono LLC, opposition. We have Megan Ching, support. And Marion Kapuniai, opposition. Anyone else here for SB 1356? And members, any questions? I just want to clarify with D H H L. You know, I think the opposition, from what I'm understanding, is saying that, I think what they're envisioning is that you're talking about people who are non-Hawaiian being able to jump in front of people who are Hawaiian because through adoption. But is that, I kind of read your testimony, it's kind of the opposite. Are you talking more about, like, say, if I am native Hawaiian and then I was adopted by someone who's not 50%? Then I can't benefit to get onto the waitlist? Is that?
So Lehuakini Laokano with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. This does not change the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and any of the requirements at all. All it does is the familial status. So it's sort of helpful if I give you a scenario. Grandma, who is a lesi, at the time, the law now allows a successor to be a child, grandchild, spouse, brother, sister. But at the time when grandma wanted to designate a successor, grandchild was not one of the classes. So what grandma did was she legally adopted grandchild. So now grandchild is now legally her daughter. Okay? Now grandchild has a biological brother who she would like to leave the least to. But when grandma adopted grandchild, she became daughter and now aunt to brother. And now, in order to designate between aunt and nephew, you have to be 50%. Under the law, you can be 25% if you're spouse, child, grandchild, brother, sister. So all it's fixing is the familial relationship. It does not change the law at all. You still have to be 50%, 25% to succeed. It's just that now she can be, she can inherit as the successor to grandma, but she can also leave it to brother as her successor. It's just the relationships. Because otherwise, under the law, they're severed as brother, sister. She becomes aunt to brother when grandma, that's all it is.
Yeah, in a way, in a way.
It's easier when you look at a scenario.
Yeah, that helps a lot. Did you have a question? Senator Rhodes.
And this is a legal adoption.
This is a legal adoption.
Because I grew up, choke people, huh, I?
Right.
But this is true legal adoption.
True legal adoption.
And that does fix something.
Yeah, yeah. Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have SB 1582. This is for Remain to D H H L. Ensures that the $600 million appropriated to the department in Act 279, Session Law 2022, is available for expenditure until June 30, 2025. And so first up, we have D H H L in support. Thank you. Attorney General in support.
Deputy Attorney General Randall Michiel for the Department of the Attorney General. We have submitted our written comments and are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments. Budget and Finance in support. County Council of Maui in support. Office of the Mayor of Maui in support. Hui Kako'aina Ho'opula'ua, support. Nani Maderos, Chief Housing Officer, in support. HACbed in support. Anyone else here for SB 1582? Seeing none, members, any questions? None, then we have SB 1609. This appropriates funds for certain departments and agencies to provide grants to tax-exempt nonprofit organizations that have experience, expertise in supporting and advancing native Hawaiian communities. And so first up, we have the Attorney General's Office with comments. Hello, hi, Elise.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Deputy Attorney General Elise Ami-Mia. We thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on this bill. Article seven, Article seven, Section four of the Hawaii Constitution requires that grants be provided via standards provided by law. And initially, we didn't see any standards. And so in our testimony, we provided some, two options available to the committee. And I am available for questions. And we thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have D-BED with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. D-BED stands in its written testimony offering comments.
Okay, thank you, standing on testimony. County Council of Maui in support. CNHA in support. Okay, standing on testimony, thank you very much. Ko'olau Foundation, support. K'apulea Chamber of Commerce in support. Oh, thank you, Kirin, in support, standing on testimony. Business Revitalization Task Force of West Oahu of K'apulea Chamber of Commerce in support. Thank you so much, standing. Department of Budget and Finance with comments. County of Maui, Office of the Mayor in support. Marion Kapuniai, support. Center for Hawaiian Sovereignty Studies, opposition. And Hui Ivi Kuomo'o in support. Anyone else here for SB 1609? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Just comments from D-BED. Is it a position or have nothing that they're standing on?
Actually. Yeah.
Actually, we support the intent of this measure.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you. Anyone other questions? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the last bill then, SB 1357. Remain to Affordable Housing on Hawaiian Homelands. Makes permanent Act 141, Session Law 2009, which requires the counties to issue affordable housing credits to the Department of Hawaii's Homelands upon the department's request. Makes permanent Act 98, Session Law of 2012, which requires counties to issue affordable housing credits for each residential unit developed by D H H L. And so first, we have D H H L in support.
I'm sure we're standing on our remarks.
Okay, standing on testimony, thank you. Naiopahui with comments. Dowling Company Incorporated in support. And Nani Maderos, Chief Housing Officer, for the Governor, in support. Anyone else here for SB 1357? Seeing none, members, any questions? Yes, Senator Keho'Kolole.
For D H H L. Thank you, Chair.
Ross Shuntukal.
I'm hoping that you've been briefed on the Hawaii County Housing Audit. And if so, if you could respond to the, that county's auditor's contention that housing credits were utilized without appropriate safeguards for the construction of a fence on the La'io'pua property?
Um.
Are you, I guess, so for the edification of everyone watching, I'm hoping that you've been apprised of the audit?
We, I briefly have been apprised of the audit, Senator, very briefly. I did have the opportunity to talk with Hawaii Island's Housing Officer yesterday, who shared with me that Hawaii County would be proposing amendments to you. And I did agree with the Chief Housing Officer to enter into discussions with her and Hawaii County. Absolutely willing to do that.
Okay, so as a follow-up, if you could maybe clarify for the committee, you know, in the audit report, there was a discussion about the use of housing credits to build a fence around a property as opposed to the utilization of the credits for construction of housing. Could you help us understand what the situation is and why it was identified in the audit?
Mal for the question. Stuart Motsonaga, Land Development Division Acting Administrator. And thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. So in that situation, in La'io'pua and around the state, we so-called monetized the credits in different ways. In some ways, it's used to reduce developer fees, which D H H L would have had to pay. In some cases, we've received land and in some cases, cash. In the case with La'io'pua, we monetized it by constructing a fence that was required with the project. And so we, we looked at the value of the fencing and felt that it was compatible or equal to the issuance of the credits to the developer. At that time, it was Armstrong builders, I believe, yeah.
Can you help us understand exactly why the fence was so important?
The fence surrounds a critical endangered species habitat. And our housing is right next to it. So it was required so that we can prevent any kind of trespassing or, or.
Required by who?
Federal animals. This was a, I believe it was, I think it was interior. It's based on this endangered species habitat.
It was a federal requirement as a condition to construction?
I believe it was, but we can go back and check.
Seeing as how it was specifically highlighted in the county audit, I, it would be nice, as this bill proceeds, for the department to clarify its position as, as it relates to that specific audit so that we can, you know, hopefully have an understanding of what was going on. Hopefully, as this bill continues to move, Chair. Thank you.
Good questions, thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Members, you know, I can go into decision-making, but if you want to recess, we could, if you may need, that's okay? Okay, okay. We're going to decision-making then on our 101 Agenda. So starting first with SB 1235. This is related to OHA and clarifying their working group and making some changes to working group. You know, the Chair is inclined to just to keep this measure alive, at least for discussion purposes. And I want to make sure that we highlight and summarize OHA's very valid concerns in the committee report, knowing that there's a lot at stake here and we want to make sure that we do respect their concerns that are raised. A couple of amendments that I want to recommend is that we take OHA's recommended amendment to, that the inventory would be of ceded lands. So clarify it, ceded lands. I also want to take the Budget and Finance recommendation that we reinstate the two additional roles for the working group in the bill. Any technical amendments that SMA would recommend? Any questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none, then passing with amendments.
Okay. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair, aye. Senator Ihara?
Aye.
Senator Keho'Kolole?
Aye.
Senator Richards?
Aye.
Okay, Chair, adopted.
Thank you. SCR 14, SR 12, Requesting OHA to Establish and Maintain Hawaiian Cultural Centers Within the State. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
With all members present, if you have any reservations, all ayes? All right, motion passes.
SB 1356, this allows adopted individual to benefit both by relationship through a natural parent or through adoptive disposition in accordance with the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. So recommendation is to pass, six, pass with technical amendments. And I want to note the concerns from, you know, from opponents in the committee report, but also kind of clarifying the purpose of the bill as explained by D H H L. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Okay, with all five members present, is there any reservations or nays? All right, all ayes? Motion passes, Chair.
Thank you. SB 582, this is for the 600 million for D H H L and making the expenditure available till June 30, 2025. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions or concerns? None, Vice Chair.
All right, with all members present, is there any nays or reservations? All right, motion passes, ayes?
Okay, SB 1609, this is appropriating funds for certain departments to provide grants to tax exempt nonprofits. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. And, you know, the Attorney General, on page three of her testimony, provided some standards for these grants that she recommends would help to clarify this bill and to improve it. So I'm going to recommend we adopt page three of the Attorney General's testimony to the bill. In addition, I want to add another section that amends last year's bill, which was Act 195 from 2022. And basically use the same language, you know, that we're putting into this bill to amend Act 195 so that we can correct what happened last year.
Can you explain what was Act 95?
Act 195 from last year was basically the same, virtually the same bill. So I don't know if you recall, we passed it last year. It was $2 million in grants for various purposes. There was repatriation of EV, entrepreneurship hubs. It was for online sales of Hawaiian goods. And the funds were released, but there were concerns raised by BNF about technicalities in the language of the bill that then prevented them from ever being actually expended. Any concerns or, good question. Okay, so recommend pass with amendments.
All right, with all five members present, is there any nays, reservations? All right, motion passes.
Okay, and then finally, SB 1357. This is extending affordable housing tax credits for D H H L. Recommendation is to pass with technical amendments. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Okay, with all five members present, is there any nays, reservations? Okay, ayes, motion passes.
Okay, we are adjourned.